Okay, this is a joint meeting of the Affordable Housing Committee and Town Planning and Zoning Commission on March 14, 2022. In just a few minutes, we'll have introductions from the respective chairs of the commission, and then we'll have a brief presentation from Glenn Schalder of Planometrics, and then open discussion. So bear with me. Okay. I think we are... Oh, wait a second. I'm on the wrong thing.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay, so we have Gwen Alperic from the Affordable Housing Committee joining us online. So that's, Steve, would you like to make an introductory remark?
Yeah, so just Gwen on...
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. Steve Grothwell, Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee. With me is Nina Janus, and Gwen, and we're missing a couple of others who couldn't be here tonight. So we're doing the Affordable Housing Plan Update as is required by the state. It's due June 1, and we have done an awful lot of work to date. We're meeting tonight with TPZ for several reasons. First is to get your comments on the plan. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to look through it. And in addition, by the way, there's a one-page handout that I did that highlights strategies, and in yellow, you'll see the four or five where TPZ, we're hoping, would be directly involved. As I said, we've done an awful lot of work, working with Glenn Schalder from Planometrics, and because of a number of our strategies involved TPZ, then we need your comments and hopefully, your agreement to move forward on some of the strategies. And just in general, feedback on anything that's in the plan would be appreciated. That's it.
Hi, good evening. Tommy Noonan, Chair of the Fairfield Town Planning and Zoning Committee. Look forward to working with you this evening, and even in the future. We know you guys have put in a lot of hard work, excuse me, a lot of hard work. I have commissioners with me. I'll let them introduce themselves. Or do you want me to introduce? Yeah.
I'm Jim West, Planning Director.
Kathy Braun, Zoning Commissioner.
Emmeline Harrigan, Assistant Planning Director.
Freda Gordon, Commissioner of Alden.
Stephen Leving, Commissioner, Vice Chair.
Alexis Erickson, Commissioner.
Thank you again for the invitation. We look forward to working with you.
Janice School, Basis, Affordable Housing.
Nina Bellis.
Steve Grothwell.
I'm Glenn Schalder from Planometrics.
Move back if you want. Hi, Anna.
Hi. Yeah, I'm Ash, my official hero for listen and watch.
Say hello.
Two friends.
This is here.
Two of our wives.
Well, yeah. More and more attracted to the economic environment. So with that, I'll just turn things over to Gwen.
Good to go, Mark.
I think so.
Well, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. As Steve indicated, I had a pleasure working with the Affordable Housing Committee on preparation of this plan. Significant about this plan is Fairfield has created two affordable housing plans before. Those were because the town recognized the need for affordable housing at different times as the circumstances were changing. This is the first plan required by state law, and so it's been a pleasure and an opportunity to work with the committee on this. The slides are going to look familiar because they're basically sort of built on what Steve talked about, but I'm happy to go through them and just kind of set the stage for questions and things that you may have. And I guess if the clicker's not going to work.
What do they have now?
You hit down? Just down button? Does it work? Oh, there we go. Oh, thank you very much. I'm sorry. When you see me go like this, that's what I'm doing. So the operative statute they're working under is Connecticut General Statute 8-30J. The 8-30 part may sound familiar to you because of 8-30G, but this section is a requirement for the town to prepare an affordable housing plan, as was indicated by June 1 of this year. So it's amazing how fast time flies when you're having fun, and we find ourselves not too, too far away from that time. Statutory requirement is for the plan to specify how the municipality intends to increase the number of affordable housing developments in the municipality. It's not the most artfully worded because it's developments, not units, but this is what we're working with. We've interpreted that to mean units because that's really the issue that relates to people and how... And as was indicated in the statute, the plan needs to be updated every five years. So you're familiar with the POCD. That's every 10 years. So this is, I think, an indication of the priority the state felt for this in terms of making this a recurring scenario each time. Well, it worked. Yeah, thank you. Whatever. You woke it up. Perfect. As I indicated earlier, Fairfield has a history of preparing affordable housing plans. The 1988 plan was really one of the first in the state that dealt with this issue in the way that Fairfield did. In some of my work, I've seen a chart, prepared a chart, which compares average incomes to average housing prices, and it's really in the mid to late 80s that we really start to see this divergence where housing prices relative to income get to an inflection point and start to take off. And Fairfield recognized this and tackled the issue head-on. So here we are tonight. I believe this is the Jackie Duro. Jackie was first elected at the time and actually drove this effort. So I just think it's sort of exciting, if you will, that we're kind of completing a circle, this type of effort. The 2014 plan was a recognition that after the housing crisis in the 2006, 2008 range and some of the issues that came along, quite a bit had changed since 1988, and this was an opportunity to update the plan and reacquaint Fairfield residents with the circumstances in the community today. And so we've been building on this effort as part of this plan here overall. We started last summer in terms of working on the plan and different background booklets and discussions, et cetera. We discussed and refined a wide variety of different ideas in terms of ways that we could influence the preparation of the plan and the creation of affordable housing units. We did a community survey online, and we had over 1,100 participants in the survey, which gave us great information for our efforts. And as you recall, we met with TPZ back in October and shared some ideas in terms of where we were going, and that feedback was very helpful for us now in terms of putting this plan together. So the plan can exist really sort of in two parts. Tonight, we're going to talk about the executive summary. That hits the highlights, but there's additional information in the full report. The overall goals of the committee is to accumulate enough housing unit equivalency points over the next five years to qualify for at least one four-year moratorium under 830G. So the town is better able to plan where and what types of housing are developed. You get a four-year moratorium by creating enough housing unit equivalent points to equal 2% of the housing stock. So that's a considerable number of units, but also, as you're aware, Fairfield has been making progress in this area, and there's units in the pipeline. So we are close to our first moratorium and hopefully additional points in moratoriums after that. The second goal is to provide a broad range of housing options and choices. What we talked about was that the age demographics of the community are changing, people's housing preferences are changing, and that there could be opportunities to meet these housing needs without capital A affordable housing, but other housing options and choices. We ended up with Tier One strategies. We talked through quite a number of strategies, but these were the ones that we felt could have the highest impact in terms of accomplishing these goals. The first one was to increase the affordability set aside requirement. If the affordability set aside requirement is 10%, we're basically keeping level with units that are created, and we're not making progress, particularly if those units also expire over time. So there are different zoning districts in Fairfield with different affordability percentages, and so the plan advocates for increasing that percentage. And clearly, what that percentage could or should be is a topic for discussion. Can I interject here?
Absolutely.
So the one pager that I had handed out, you'll see that it's not noted up there, but on the one pager, TPZ is an important part of us doing that first one. And I do want to add that the Affordable Housing Plan that we did six years ago or so with Glenn, so we had 11 action items in order to reach our goals, and we did very well on meeting a number of those. And most of them was because we were working with TPZ. We got the inclusionary zoning through your assistance. We did some work on the ADUs with your assistance. We got the inclusionary zoning fee with your assistance. And so hopefully, we can hit a number of those this time around.
How close are we in work rate?
We're... I would just roll in rough numbers, around 50 points shy of 400 points to be at present. That's based on the 2010 census number. You expect at some point, 2020 census numbers to be released publicly. The estimates so far were a minor modest impact in terms of the housing equivalency point goal, I think, the D. But in terms of projects in the pipeline, the two that are currently under construction, to put us closer, these are at 78 Oak Place and 528 Black Rock Turnpike. We'll probably need one more project to actually break ground. Well, it depends. Each unit, units don't count the same. So rental units typically start at one and a half points based on 80%. They count points if they're lower target, if they're one and a half points, which brackets are. So it's hard to make a direct comparison. Of course, all these are at this point just estimates until such time as we actually make the application. Department of Housing may have a different idea as to what each of these developments is worth point-wise, but I think we have a pretty good sense of that.
I hear what you said about the 2020 census.
Yeah.
When that comes out, will that make us farther away?
It'll move the goalpost a little bit.
Okay. Maybe like 60 or 70?
It's about 70.
Okay, okay, thanks.
We have a really impact in terms of crossing the finish line already. One more project pretty beside us over. There are a number of candidates potentially based on rules that are granted. Typically, once they start, once they break ground, it's at least an 18-month construction cycle before they're positioned to get a CEO, and that's when we can actually count.
Just jumping back for a second to the question about points. In the full report, we've added a glossary in the back. As you pointed out, many people aren't familiar with some of the terms that we use, and on page 33 of that report in the glossary, there's a definition for housing unit equivalent points, and then there's a table that shows what you get in terms of ownership or rental, et cetera. So as Mark indicated, the post you get per unit is two and a half. So in 50 points, that would be 20 units in that scenario, but those are rented units at 40% of AMI. Those are challenging to create. So if we go with an 830G at 80% of area median income, that could be somewhere half a point if it's elderly and one and a half if it's... And so that gets you what the numbers could be.
Maybe I'll... I know I provide this periodically, definitely to our housing base and also to TPZ staff, where we provide an updated development tracker, where we assess the current status of the projects that are in the pipeline, so to speak, and what housing is going to be. So I'll make sure that that gets to...
I also want to know, I don't know who taxes, but is there any data to show how these are hardly being a talking point? Who are building affordable housing? Are they actually not prepared anymore?
One thing... Yeah, we do get annual compliance reports from all projects that are placed in the service. I review those and provide comments back to Jim, your planning director, in terms of whether or not they each standard or not. You know, typically...
I'll just put it on here. I can't speak, so I'm just going to...
I'll take Herb.
Herb, would you mind muting if you're...
We can... We have a spreadsheet that we can... Unless you need... Mark has prepared it. We have it. We can circulate it to you, but the two things to note in the glossary, you're looking at page 33, the market rate units, each count for a quarter point as well. So all of the market rates in an 8-30G get a quarter point. The affordable units get, obviously, four points. And we have that track. Then affordable housing plans that are submitted as part of those developments, they require an annual certification. They have a city unit. They have to report the household income in that unit, the rents, or to make sure, Mark checks those to make sure you're still within the range. If somebody, for example, has got a point over the course of the year, their income is now outside of that 80% range, then the landlord's obligated to offer the next available unit as an affordable. So if the affordable units move around as people come and go, and as people's incomes might change, they're obligated to offer the next available unit if someone becomes ineligible because they may have earned more income than they had the year prior.
One more follow-up. You know, this law, 38, most of these 830Gs are neighbors here for four years. And will we get to see some of these age out in the next decade? We aren't tracking any of that, but knowing some of these will be, yeah, it's a little more than housing at that point.
Yes, we do have a list of elements that count towards our inventory in the date, which the seed restrictions. I don't know that's in... I don't think it's... Unless Glenn grabbed it somewhere, but I certainly have the vine.
I have... The state actually maintains a database, an Excel spreadsheet of all towns in the state. They track to the day the expiration of all of the units. Yeah, it's pretty important. I think when the statute was first created initially, the restriction period was 20 years. Then it went to 30. Now it's at 40. And I think this issue of the expiration of units and them going offline is awakening people to that particular scenario, that however hard work to create affordable units, if they continue to disappear, it becomes sort of a challenging scenario. I think strategy number two in the Tier One category is to look at the design residence district, perhaps in ways that it could be reviewed and amended to increase its ability to provide housing options, numbers of affordable housing units, and possibly enable smaller housing developments where appropriate and increase housing options overall. So perhaps not necessarily big projects with tall, a lot of units, but it could be locations adjacent to business zones and other places where the DRD could fit in if we in fact allowed smaller parcels to have a small, well-designed multifamily development on it. And that might have the potential to produce a number of new units sized to meet people's changing housing needs. As people age, they often seek smaller, lower maintenance, less expensive types of housing. That could address that scenario in addition to the capital A affordable housing units as well.
So I've got some prepared remarks about the DRD when we get to a bunch of...
I'll keep going. Happy to. Strategy number three is the only strategy, as Steve pointed out here, which doesn't involve TPZ. All of these other ones really perhaps involve some regulation changes, et cetera. We're, as we indicated, teamwork would be very important. But this one is to work with another important team member in town, which is the Housing Authority, airwork to create additional affordable housing units. The Housing Authority can, through state and federal funding, reach the deepest levels of affordability in terms of 40% of area median income or 50% or 30%, et cetera. They can tune the project to the neighborhood based on what they think is a scenario which could work, and 100% of the units often are in fact affordable. So it's not 10% of the units or 20% of the units. It's possibly 100% of units. So we can get considerable points and address some of the most challenging housing needs through part and working, supporting Housing Authority and their work. Strategy number four in the Tier One is to look at establishing and strengthening design guidelines and locational guidelines for multifamily housing, mixed-use development, and other housing options to support greater flexibility and opportunity. We know that TPZ is working on the town plan and also on the zoning regulations, so these could be opportunities. And we prepared some apps along the way, which looked at the location of attributes which could perhaps support housing-related objectives, proximity to transit, both bus lines and train stations, where water sources available, where businesses might be within walking distance to create sort of a neighborhood focus. And these might be locational guidelines that might influence, for example, design residence district or other approaches in terms of density, et cetera. So in the survey, it came back sort of loud and clear that the design of housing was important to people. When they hear affordable housing, very often, they have thoughts which development which they feel would be inappropriate, yet we have examples and have seen visual examples of developments which are visually appropriate. So how can we encourage that? And then also for the locational guidelines overall. So those are the Tier One strategies.
We'll put a pause here to see if there's any other questions or thoughts or observations information there, and maybe let Jim talk to the theory.
Are there any... We'll probably get to this later, but are there any projects or proposals pending now from the Fairfield Housing Authority? That seems like low-hanging fruit if they could get something done like that.
I know you had approved the project at 90 High Street, which was unappealed through the left side of the city to go back to the US, solve those issues. But expect that. They've also looked at our Hero Street, the United States Highway, St. Edward Parish, that it was the site of alternative high school. So they looked at a positively acquiring property, the church, and I understand to make another venture buyer on that site. So again, part of the challenge is always finding school locations and then having the wherewithal to quickly, you know, put it under contracts. You have the ability then to work through the development questions, but that's all the time that's the challenge. There's a lot of people that are trying to say that. This would be a good time to maybe talk about having people have Glenn.
I think it's a Tier One-type strategy here, so I think advancing that conversation.
Each一页 of the plan talks about some menu of options we can find within this district, but for those who may not be familiar with what the design is, I want to give a little sort of review on that because it's been some time. So the design residence district has been in the... Since the 50s, and historically, that's the district's overall label, and it's essentially where the condos had been built. And I list four examples on the bottom. We have a couple thousand units. I list, for example, Mostwood, which is adjacent to the train station, generally with 136 units. Stillson Oaks, Stillson Road, right by Lake Hill Shopping Center, Pine Ridge, which is on South Pine Creek, kind of across the street from the Har3 Golf Course. Dogwood Green, another example of where Fairfield was in Stratford Row. There are many, many others. But in the top part above the first line, the regulations for 30 years had a, regardless of what zone it was being applied for, there was a universal density. It was 9375 square feet, which is the A-zone minimum lot size for the first unit, and then 3,000 square feet per unit thereafter, which depending on your lot area, would yield between 12 and 14 and a half units per acre. So at a one-acre site, it would be 12 units. You get up to 30 acres, those numbers bump up to like 14 and a half. In the late 80s, in the late 80s, there was popular option. There were a lot of condominium developments proposed, the tire plugs, looking at, and there was a sentiment in the community, okay, we've got it on campus, maybe we're building condos, we need to throttle back. The marketplace was kind of saturated. In 1988, the commission amended the design of this district to how it's presently in our regulations, and that's in between those two lines. The present regs, but in 1988, what it did was tie the density that you could have at a condominium to the underlying zone, created much larger minimum lot sizes. For example, the triple A-zone, you needed a 30-acre minimum, and you could only have a half a unit per acre, which is really the same, not very much more dense than you could do in a regular subdivision. 10-acre minimum, the double A-zone, only one unit per acre yield. Our half-acre zone, you need the five-acre minimum and the 3.2 units per acre yield, and on down to our A-zone, one acre minimum, 6.9 units per acre, which is more, that's what the A-zone regulations permit. And since then, we haven't had too much DRD density. And what we are suggesting and what we've discussed with Glenn and the committee as potential options to consider is as we are faced with applications for particularly 8-30G applications that are looking for much greater densities, we think it's time to have a conversation as to whether or not the timing might be right to consider increasing the densities that we permit under the DRD to give a developer an option to do more than they could do today in the present days, but a less dense project than would result if someone were to do a full-blown 8-30G application. So it's an opportunity to have a conversation about increasing those densities to give someone an opportunity, something in point. In, on page 17, and we'll get to it later, there's some options to consider, whether the timing might be right to allow a greater opportunity, to allow a smaller project at a greater density than it can do now, to give a developer an opportunity for something less onerous than a full-blown 8-30G. That's kind of the background of those questions. Yes?
Anecdotally, have been approached by applicants or attorneys that are curious about that idea.
Well, we have had the property that has been at play for a while, that where people have asked, what can they do? And they're looking at everything that our regulations would permit now versus doing an 8-30G application, and we want to do 8-30G. So it might be an opportunity if we could get that unit count up into the 12 to 15 unit per acre range potentially, that, you know, again, on a smaller lot, that's a smaller project. So yes, not a huge number, but I think if we give opportunity points... So yes, not a huge number, but I think if we give opportunity points potential investors or developers to an opportunity that's greater than they can have today, but lesser than the eight-dash-thirty-G option might be something quite better, especially also considering as the number one bullet there, considering a higher set aside apartment.
Yes, if we were to coincidentally increase the affordability set aside fifteen or twenty percent, do you think that would be a problem as far as, you know, promoting these, increase density but lesser of the thirty-G developments?
That's a good question. We'd have to, I guess, do some math. We'd have to, unless Carol, to do some math, maybe to see what, is fifteen percent right number at a certain density? Or are we getting to the point of, well, heck, if I've got to set aside that many percent, I might as well just go for the greater density of thirty percent. So you're probably right, there's probably a sweet spot or somewhere that we would need to find. And that's something that we should explore. It's a good, excellent question.
And likely we'd have to revisit time to time anyway, because market conditions change. So, but I think it's, that's, we would have to look at the development performance and see whether or not we can make it feasible, financially feasible, and enough incentive that somebody would offer that.
If I jump in just for a sec, I think the other significant thing is that an eight-thirty-G requires a sixty percent of AMI and an eighty. And the sixty is really, my understanding from talk with developers, an eighty percent AMI unit basically covers its cost of development. The sixty percent is, that hurts. So if the DRD was at an eighty percent of AMI, or even a bonus for going to sixty, there's, as Mark says, penciling it out becomes a situation that might have advantages for development.
And I could add that if it's in black and white, if it's written down and the developers know what they can do as of right, I think that adds to their ability to work with a higher set aside.
We have, it seems to be that we're pretty developed in our town, we're kind of a steady development area. Yes, and we're just staying in the same territory now, but I would be happy.
Well, you know, every time we think, you know, like I hear everyone describe town, it's true, very mature development around sixteen thirty-nine, right? So there's very few undeveloped parcels, but that hasn't stopped development. There's always great development, and development is occurring, and build, develop existing sites. So I think, you know, what we, we can't necessarily anticipate that we've exhausted all the likely candidates because there's always seemed to be something out there that we haven't considered. There's enough market drive, demand to support a lot of these eight-thirty-G additions which are currently seen. So yeah, just trying to provide another option, you know, but for this, I would not do eight-thirty-G. Well, can we fill that in somewhere?
And I would add that new technology makes development even possible in areas like Greenfield Hill. You can do a large development on the septic nowadays.
And it was appropriate design guidelines, too, to ensure that you get something that actually blends in, fits into the neighborhood.
The advantage of creating potentially a greater opportunity under regulations that we already is that they have to stick to those regulations. Right now, the DRD allows us a three-story building at forty feet, which is the same height requirement as the R3, double A, triple A zones on up. So it's not a inconsistent height requirement than what we presently have in our regulations. And we have a twenty percent lot coverage cap, a fifty percent floor ratio cap, or whatever design element you think is appropriate. The advantage is if we can get densities right and folks avail themselves of that opportunity, they have to meet the design standards. The difference, obviously, as you are aware, the eight-dash-thirty-G standard, if they go that, they don't have to apply any of those standards. Well, again, that's, 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 that's the advantage of creating a design requirement that someone hopefully avail themselves of, and then they have to meet that standard rather than going off mainstream, so to speak, doing whatever they think is going to make their project become feasible.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing on this, that I think there's two significant things that I just wanted to pass on. The state established a task force this past legislative session that's supposed to be coming up with housing design guidelines, kind of a guidebook, sometime, I think, in the next six to nine months. There's no firm deadline for it, but that's when the report is printed out. So it's quite possible that that could provide useful information that the town could then piggyback on. The other thing, Carrie, Carrie's not here tonight, Carrie Makeover found a website called Affordable Housing Design Advisor on page twenty of the full report that shows their website. And it actually has some wonderful examples that can be used to guide development. And so I think the Global Housing Committee is hoping that the planning, TPZ might sort of embrace this concept and try to figure out ways, the consultant you're working with on the POCD and the zoning regs, to bring this in. It could be a wonderful addition and a new opportunity overall. So there's a number of recommendations in the long, long version of the plan to address that. Wake it back up. There you go. Thank you so much. So the tier two strategies are moderate or high impact. These are things that support the overall effort. The first recommendation here is to look at ways to perhaps increase the affordability term beyond the forty-year period. There are municipalities around the state looking at this. I think Darian's requirement is for the life of the unit or forty years, whichever is longer. I know that your regulations have also addressed this particular issue, but it seems to be an area of growing interest around the state because, again, four years goes by quickly. And if the units disappear, we're going to be continually doing this. So the recommendation is to go ahead and look at that particular situation. The other recommendation is to look at ways to deed restrict existing housing units. There are not a lot of units in Fairfield which are naturally affordable, given where sort of interest rates and everything's naturally affordable, meaning that they sell or rent at affordable prices, but they're just not deed restricted. If we could figure out ways to deed restrict those units, either through tax incentives or other types of financial incentives, that we don't have to build new units. They have additional units which contribute to our affordable housing stock. We have wonderful organizations in town that assist these sorts of efforts. We've got the Housing Authority, Operation Hope, and others that could help in this particular effort. So is this a way that we could try to accomplish more?
We do have a program, I think many of you already know, that we have a neighborhood revitalization program that does provide a lot of assistance to both nonprofits as well as rural landlords in exchange for deed restriction to fifty-one percent of the units within that structure. Rent that for rent. So we do get a deed restriction in exchange for that assistance. Typically, at a forty-year term, in order to get a housing unit, points under eight-thirty-G for a moratorium is a pretty big impediment, because people don't want necessarily, unless you're providing a lot of financing for a project, you're providing twenty thousand dollars for the place. And you ask them, well, in exchange for that, restrict your unit for years, they look at me like I'm crazy. So that's, that's the drawback. So we do get the benefit from creating the affordable rental unit, but typically restricted for less than forty years in order to do that. So it counts towards our inventory, but doesn't count necessarily for housing and points moratorium.
And then the third strategy is identifying ways to allow more types of housing in more areas. Conversation these days is around this concept of what's called middle housing. Middle housing basically means housing between single-family homes at one end of the housing spectrum and then higher-density, taller buildings at the other end of the spectrum, larger multifamily projects. Yet over time, the country has been built around two-family, three-family houses and what they're calling cottage courts or other types of different housing flavors that are smaller that nestle into neighborhoods. But again, and some of what we've seen on some of the other developments is either we get single-family or we're getting these bigger projects that we don't really feel fit in. Could there be things in the middle, even with the DRD regulations or other things like that that could work? They can provide for affordable units, but they can also provide other types of housing options for people and for families. And this might be a way to address housing needs as well.
First one, the term, are you expecting that to be prospective or retrospective?
The retrospect, I mean, the deep.
As well. I think I heard in New York, they made it retrospective, they made it lifetime, but I was curious. It was New York City or New York State, I thought they did.
One of the options would simply perhaps be to build in an option at the end of the forty-year term whereby the exercise an option to extend, point out the competency, the development, provide some mechanism by which you do that. But at least you're providing an opportunity to distribute the requirement for the term. So that's just above the eye. There are other communities in Fairfield County that are experimenting with that, right? Is there that tier knowledge? Yeah, I don't know. I mean, you mentioned Darian, I'm not too many, not aware of too many in Connecticut. It's possibly outside of the state, which is typical, so you'll look at other jurisdictions to see what they might be able to do. But I, you know, I don't know if I can do that.
Yes, so Darian does have a section of their regulations, I think it's called below-market rate housing. And that section of the regulations does provide for the life of the unit or forty years, whichever is longer. So they have essentially predicated it on more than forty years. I am working with several communities around the state preparing these affordable housing plans, and I would say everybody's looking at this issue and trying to figure out what the next step is. Because for many years, communities tended to ignore eight-thirty-G and hoped it wouldn't sort of show up. And I think we're starting to realize now that affordable housing is an important issue in a community. So how do we make these units last longer to really get the benefit from them? And so this is sort of the next step. A head of development explained it to me, he says, if I'm going to sell the unit, I don't care how long the deed restriction is because my interest has gone, right? So it doesn't affect them. And on the rental stream, the discounted value of an investment forty years in the future, depending what your discount rate is, it's not pennies or a dollar, but it's certainly much less. So the other concept that we actually talked about in the committee was a concept, too, that said, initial deed restriction is for forty years. There's an automatic renewal at the end of forty years, except that developer or owner can offer to buy it out and the town can accept or reject, say no, we're going to keep that in place. Or maybe the unit's getting a little long in the tooth and maybe, maybe we can take the money into the housing trust fund and do something bigger or better with it, or something. So to provide flexibility, rather than just, this is what it has to be regardless of circumstances, but provide an approach that establishes an expectation for a deed restriction over the long term, but be flexible that there may be circumstances that would dictate that maybe there's a better option for us, the town.
Yeah, just to expand on that, just, there are two places presently in our regulations where we demand the low-market rate units be for the life of the structure, but for no case, no less than forty years. It's the, two sections are thirteen point fourteen point seven and twenty-one point sixteen point thirteen, which are the TOE sections around Metro Center. They are our commerce drive, transit, design grid, and then the transient development park, which is the Metro Center. So we have two, two sections of our regulations presently that require them for a lifetime. It's just that eight-dash-thirty-G is the type of that stage. It's, you know, while it's thirty, the question is, is it under eight-dash-thirty-G, we can compel that for more than forty years?
Conversation with some municipalities, and I think one of the things we talked about, and it may actually be a segue to the next page, is the concept of standard documents. And if the town was to have a standard housing affordability plan, that says, this is the language that you are required to use, and it lays out what those requirements are. I did some work with the town of Ridgefield, and on the town of Ridgefield's website, they actually have a standard housing affordability plan, and they have a list of approved third-party administrators. And for any affordable housing development proposed by whoever. You're either going to use our plan or explain to us why you're not going to use our plan, and we'll decide whether or not that's okay with us. And you have to use an approved administrator. It doesn't have to be one that we suggest, but you have to indicate it's somebody who's qualified.
Just to, one other point, and Steve had a question. We do have a model plan that is recommended that you follow, it's more suggestion. So could we make it more compulsory or, you know, tighten up those regulations a little bit? Steve, do you have a question?
Yeah, you referenced middle housing. Would that be something like the cluster housing model of the, you know, co-op sort of cooperative living type program? Would that be particularly appropriate, something like Greenfield Hill area? And how, how would you go about promoting this sort of development?
I think that the way, there's this wonderful book called Middle Housing, Missing Middle Housing is what it's called. It shows a number of examples of different types of developments. And I think that, to me, it provides a little bit of a menu that, for Fairfield to look at and to say, some of these building styles are distinctly sort of Californian in nature. And you might say, and I think the communities that they were being utilized in allow on-street parking. So you have these sites which, you know, we have snow here, right? So there's some neighborhoods maybe you couldn't park on the street, and other ones, no, you can't. So how does this all work? But I think to look at what types of scenarios could fit in Fairfield. And I think Jim and Emily had shared with me some pictures of some of the DRD developments that had been built over the years. And you think, those are attractive developments. And we could, you know, try to encourage smaller-scale developments that fit into neighborhoods rather than kind of the more monolithic structures. So I think it's an exploration opportunity, maybe as part of the POCD.
Yeah, just to kind of give you as an update, because we haven't noticed publicly yet, publicly yet, because it's still working its way through the proof process. We have made an offer to a successor, an exciting consulting firm, issues about Pope Bell. There was a slug of money set aside, a lot of funding, for us to go hire consultants to help us. Number one, finish our POCD update process that kind of got stalled with COVID. Number two, update and rewrite our zoning regulations. So we're going to be re-engaging with you to re-update the process in the near term. And when we had our last public engagement sessions, we asked folks, which topics do you think we need further public engagement on? And one of them was housing. So we anticipate as part of this work, we're all going to be involved in additional public outreach session on housing, which can hopefully take a deeper dive into some of these topics. As Glenn refers to our upcoming, you know, POCD effort and rewriting the regulations, referring that we are going to be engaging with you hopefully later this spring to ramp up in that process with a consultant. We're excited. And once we have officially approved through the board, so like, and provide them their proposal so we can show what our expectations are for work for you. It is going to entail some additional meetings and some planning sessions and some additional public outreach, which we're excited to re-engage in.
I don't want to just go back to the money of options. Is there a way we can secure ourselves better as a town to acquire land? I know people like the outside property, I know there's a property in the middle area, upper state. Why can't we secure ourselves better as a town to be in charge of our own destiny and from to affordable, affordable housing? So we can meet these hurdles, like when they're seniors or families, what happens?
There's a couple, couple things. We're not the, we're not the most nimble to actually acquire property. Uh, you know, when I, I'll just give it, 244 Green Cross Streets is a good example. So we use housing trust money to acquire this property, working with a willing seller that required the review and approval of the work site. This body is getting under 824, uh, the RPM, uh, before the housing committee to allocate funds from housing trust fund. So all total, there were, you know, four different bodies that had a name and required, at least I sequestered the most efficient name as possible. It still requires six days to get those scoops in place in order to move all of that. So, you know, if you're working against a private developer, who can put cash down to purchase a piece of property, you know, you're probably not going to be at the table. But there are other groups that, you know, who potentially work with that might be better suited for that. They don't need to go to four or five boards to get approval. They just need to go to board of directors and get the authorization and allocate money. So the housing authority couldn't fulfill that. Again, we have to have a kind of a meeting of the minds of what kind of properties we're looking for. And it obviously has to make sense from their perspective in order to attract the necessary capital to make the project management, so.
Is it possible to do all that in advance and have it ready for when something comes up? Like have approval to buy something, and then when it comes up, you're ready to go?
I'm not sure how, because, you know, these are typically site-specific. You know, I, I don't, not too many towns where it's a give-and-check, say, here, here's the, I'm going to give you a $50,000 authorization while, while this purchased property. Uh, you know, it's possible, maybe the town could, some communities set up redevelopment authorities that have, you know, the ability to purchase property and acquire it. And, you know, you're working through one, one board, one approval process to do that, kind of like a housing authority in that sense. But, you know, the RPM and other bodies would have to, you know, be willing to give up some of the authorities to an independently authorized corporation that has broad powers to do all that type of thing. So it hasn't been something that Fairfield has, has looked at in the past. You know, I, I think one of the things we've looked at, the 400 housing committee is, you know, again, the, uh, the low-hanging fruit, look at the town's inventory of properties and determine whether or not, you know, whether it was at one point good for a particular type of use doesn't mean 50 years later, it's still valid or good for that same use. So, you know, again, that shouldn't be necessarily the 400 housing committee acting in isolation, but there are other boards in acquisition, conservation, other, other groups that might want to consider whether or not, you know, a piece of property that the town owns is still, is still appropriate to use it for that purpose. So we, we have done that, you know, but again, the 400 housing committee has asked me to go back and provide it for a town. We're going to take another look at it, because it probably shouldn't be done periodically just to see, you know, things change. So that, that makes sense to me. So that's one, one thing we could do.
I think also to answer your question in terms of the Mill Hill property in Exide. Mill Hill, for example, was listed for $3 million. So that's not even something that we have available to us in the housing trust fund. That would, that would be a much bigger conversation town-wide in terms of, are we willing to spend $3 million?
The town was for the opportunity to purchase that property on the surface. But again, at the time, uh, I don't, the question was, well, what are we doing? Are we purchasing it for open space? Are we purchasing it for activation? Are we purchasing it for housing? You have, obviously, we need to answer that exactly. You provide that information if I came to you. That's one of the first questions I get asked. What's the, what's the end use? What's the intended use?
Well, it is on my turn, so.
You would think, you would think there would be, you know, some sheer issue, right?
Discussions are always good.
But we have, uh, you know, have a situation that, I just mentioned, uh, you know, again, other, other property is owned by not the same type of religious denomination, but there are others. It's not necessarily, may not have the same objective of mine, so.
I, I'll ask it later.
I, I like your idea of, 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 it was called, illustrated fund. That's the only way for the, uh, this town, every house, these kids here, this is 600, 700, 800 houses. You never mind getting to the level of, everything, it's all so good, it's so good. This is if you're ready for 20, you're going to go six. You need to own a lot. You need so much to do, to do, to attract to question.
Well, you were mentioning Exide. What were you going to say about?
Oh, no, I was just going to say it's, and Exide is upwards of $3 million in terms of its value. So that's, that's all.
Do we know what's going on?
No, I was just making a point in terms of just the high cost of these parcels in terms of already to act. Yeah.
The double A and the A.
Look at the housing in its breakdown by zone.
No, I think we, I think we did this count, Jim. I think we have it in, we have it, so we can email it around, but just.
It's so shocking to look at how Fairfield's rates compare to people in other sized towns that are percentage, you know, how about, get it presented.
Yeah, yeah.
But I really think it's because of the triple A and the double A, the A.
I could, I could be more specific, Justin.
Sewer. Yeah.
I think, I think if you look at, and I did share this information with members of the 400. Sure, it's with your staff as well, missions. But if you look at similarly sized communities as part of the land, in terms of the number of housing units, and then you looked at your affordable housing inventory and the makeup, a good percentage of, of most of those, all of Fairfield, are either in government-assisted or they're in chapel-backed mortgages or tenant-based rental systems, two categories which the town has very little to no control. So if you look at the communities that are equal size, similarly sized, you look at the percentage, deed-restricted units as a, as a percentage of the makeup of their affordable housing inventory, Fairfield outstrips everything by far as a percent. So again, that's, that's the thing that the town has direct control over by our own actions. We have entered into deed restrictions with particular property owners and property rental groups, restricted units. And it's just a harder way to do that, because it, it obviously is a little bit more fluid than government-assisted, for example. But, you know, the ones that have much greater percentages, the makeup is, is critical. It's important.
So to follow up on that, or, or sorry, to develop, because we do have charter vision positions. But can you approach them to make it, to make it easier for us?
I was just thinking that as, as we were having this conversation about redevelopment, sorry, because this would be an appropriate time to talk about that, uh, because we are examining our charter.
Yeah, it was coming up quickly where people be willing to, or maybe for that, we are committed to your exact.
I mean, you don't necessarily need to go through a charter vision to set up like ordinance. You need to do that. But again, it's a good time to have a conversation about whether this is the appropriate thing for the town.
Just to clarify, so towns that have a higher ratio, we're talking about 10% target ratio, they have more of the government assistance, Section 8 housing and government-backed mortgages. We have more of the deed-restricted affordable housing, but that's slower and harder to get. We'll never get to 10% on that. But, but that's the only thing that counts towards the moratorium. There's two, there's two separate analyses, right? The moratorium only looks at deed-restricted or government-owned affordable housing, although the 10% ratio looks at all the other factors. Am I accurate in that?
The government assisted and, you know, it basically has to be a unit that's placing the service or newly created or deed-restricted out of July 1990 and restricted for a period of 40 years.
And that counts towards the moratorium and the 10%, but the other forms of government assistance only count towards the 10%.
See, like tenant-based, tenant-based rental assistance, which had a back mortgages, those numbers fluctuate quite a bit, even in the case of Fairfield. Sometimes you'll say, well, how come our percentage went down 2.8% or 2.6% to 2.5%? Well, largely it's driven by those things.
I've read somewhere, I don't know where, that there is a way to promote Section 8 with landlords. I, I don't know how that would be done.
But it worked with housing, because actually, uh, the project is still in a deficiency right now as we're providing assistance to, to a private landlord who is acquiring property, single-family homes, rehabbing it, in exchange for the assistance, well, deed-restricted, uh, rental assistance, such that it would count towards both our inventory and potentially towards our moratorium points of spending amount assistance.
Do you want to incentivize landlords?
By the rental, rental assistance to persons with a housing choice voucher, the Section 8 program. And he's able to make that work. The issue is, it's really hard to aggregate the scale. He's doing it one project at a time, and, you know, so far, we've just did one project. But, you know, it demonstrates that it's possible. And actually, what it showed to be was there's more single-family homes here in town that are rental that have folks with Section 8 vouchers in it than we get credit for. Because they weren't on our deed-restricted inventory until this gentleman came and said, you know, I've been doing this, I have, you know, six or seven properties in town. I'd like to increase my inventory. Would you be willing to, to assist me? And so we talked about it. But again, uh, those six units, there were no deed restrictions, but yet they were providing affordable rental housing for folks with the housing choice voucher.
So there's two issues, identifying the Section 8 landlords and also expanding Section 8 landlords. And then potentially, what's the incentive though, for them to, on top of providing Section 8, also deed-restricted?
The way, way the incentive for, from a landlord's perspective is, let's say, I need to replace a boiler.
Okay.
Windows, that type of thing. That's going to cost me a lot of money out of pocket. We can help to create that cost in exchange for a deed restriction. And that probably maintains the quality of the house, but also will gain credit.
And deed restrictions always have to be 40 years? Because I know I.
That's, that's, so that's for our earlier conversation, by providing $20,000 to help the gentleman re-sign the house, as approved, it, it's, it's a really tough ask, you know, with restricted 40 years. I can get probably 20 years, but, you know, and how it works is, I found, so, in 20 years, it's a nice program. And do that, try to get people to, you know, provide rental housing that meets the need.
If you qualify without it being 40 years though, but wasn't there some exception to that that I spoke to Jim about? Well, it's complicated.
Yeah, accessory apartments.
Oh, that's the one.
Are, are, are classified differently, qualified under the statute. It's a 10-year deed restriction, but in order to qualify for a property, it has to be full deed restriction. So we get, so it's, there's a disconnect in the two arms of the statute.
Thank you.
Key supporting actions here are related to the other things we've talked about. Creating staff capacity. We're going to be updating these plans every five years. And some of the technical conversations about how we're going to be able to manage these units and oversee them, et cetera, need the staff capacity to do that. Updating the standard documents. The town already has those, but updating them for the best provisions and possibly incorporating those regulations. Requiring an administrator approved by the town. There have been examples in other municipalities where the administrators were unqualified. And as a result, either through mismanagement or other motivations, the units got lost. And after you've gone through all this work to create an affordability, to lose it is tremendously unfortunate. And then lastly, developing guidelines for the housing trust fund. We're very fortunate to be able to have that in town, to have it producing revenue. What happens is ways to invest those funds to create housing in the future. What can or should we do with that? How should, what guidelines should we have for that fund? So those are the key supporting actions. Our conceptual schedule going forward, just so that you know. Again, we have the statutory deadline of June 1st. There is, currently, our public hearing is scheduled for May 11th, thinking that that's a date that will work because of this requirement for a 35-day notice period that moves us back to April 6th. So following our conversation, et cetera, here tonight, we're, we're seeking the opportunity in the affordable housing committee to finalize the plan around March 30th. We can always make changes up through adoption, but our hope is with your feedback, et cetera, to move forward on this schedule to meet the June 1 deadline. So that's an overview of the plan. We had great conversations so far. So, additional thoughts?
I want to piggyback on the ADU comment, because it's so confusing. So we were having discussions over how we could add expanded ADU, you know, incentivization in our town, but have an affordability requirement in order to allow that. And I don't know if that's possible, but it would be nice if we could get some credit for it. But then I'm still confused over the 40 years goes to the moratorium, but a 10-year deed restriction goes towards the 10% quota, right?
No, exactly.
That's very confusing to me.
It is, and we have brought that up with our delegation as a potential. As you, I'm sure painfully aware, there's so much spaghetti getting thrown on the refrigerator and obviously if it sticks, in terms of land use, it'll. But one of the things we have raised at the last meeting, can we fix that moratorium credit for ADU to match the denominator calculation that, that, at 10 years? Because it's going to be very, very difficult for us to achieve a 40-year deed restriction on ADU. And I think the discussion that we have had about around that topic when we updated it last year with Steve Brerker, the 400 housing committee was a co-advocate in 2021. We had a fairly lengthy discussion about that. And it was our recommendation at the time, and I think I still have the same opinion, that if there is going to be an incentive to require that to be an affordable unit, there would have to be some sort of monetary incentive for that. That would likely be outside of the scope of the zoning regulations. We've taught town administration over the years about potential tax abatement if they deed restrict an ADU. But until we can get that disconnect connected, it'd be 10 years on both ends to count towards moratorium points. Um, it's less of an incentive for us to. That's exactly where the discussion was before. I, we had talked previously about whether or not we can incentivize to develop ADUs by providing a tax-abated tax credit for direct financing, allow the creation of ADUs in exchange for a deed restriction that would then qualify for a moratorium. At the time, we thought there was this provision in the statutes that recommends a 10-year deed restriction in order to provide credit. It was, it's my opinion still that there is a reason that that language is different in the statute versus everything else. The Department of Housing has completely.
Department of Housing has a completely different interpretation of that, which is in order to count towards the moratorium, it needs to be restricted for a period of 40 years or and be restricted or created out of July 1990. So, but it's interesting because we have restricted units that have 5-year restrictions, 15-year restrictions, 20-year restrictions under our CDBG program, which I referenced earlier, that count towards our broad inventory, because we're providing $10,000 or $5,000, $15,000. So the state will accept those towards our inventory, but they don't obviously meet the standard, the 40-year standard for moratorium. So, to Jim's point, I think it got confused because at the time we're talking about whether there's a possibility for us to provide a financial inducement or incentive with the belief that if we could do that in a tremendous exchange for a deed restriction for 10 years, we'd get moratorium. But the regulation then that we put forward, we think, and I think Steve can talk, Kerry's not here, she was our primary, but ADUs provide, you know, obviously housing options for folks, particularly seniors. And at its basic level, provides increased affordability without restriction. So I think that was primary benefit. But again, there was this other conversation we had about can we incentivize it so that we actually get restrictions?
So even if you can't get, it's not going to happen that you get anyone to want to do a 40-year deed restriction for an ADU. But even if you get the 10 years, does that then qualify in the numerator but not the denominator? How does that work out? Because our ratio keeps getting worse, okay? It gets cited in court cases on appeals. I've read footnotes and judicial decisions, but our ratio is getting bad. It's looked bad. Reality, our actual affordable housing is going up. So how can you make that ratio go up just to help us, you know?
Well, I don't know.
ADUs help us.
What we've tried, what we've said, what I've said just a few times now is, we're not going to get to 10%.
Yeah.
Because nobody's got a 10% in 30 years. This has been, unless you've already had a 10%, nobody is a penalty that's got.
Starting with 20,000.
So it was a threshold that was set that would, for municipalities to which this appeals process would apply. Wasn't necessarily meant to be, all municipalities in the state have to achieve 10%. We're not going to get, likely get to the 10%. What the number one strategy or goal of this plan, number one, is to try to achieve moratorium status. So I think there would be an incentive on the town side to create this financial incentive for a deed restriction if we can get that 10-year thing to break up so that they could qualify for a moratorium. I wouldn't get, although I see it referenced, 2% number and all that, it looks bad on comparison of, but you need to take a deeper dive into that. But what we can and will be qualifying for is moratorium credit, like stated in G of S. Initial four-year moratorium, potentially even subsequent five-year moratorium. So I think we should be more focused on that goal than looking at that 10% number, which.
But the moratorium requires a change in the law. Does not require.
Oh, I would, well, if it changed, it would be in the law, and the Department of Housing would have to change the interpretation.
I agree with Roland, I'd just make two more, which is, not that you're saying every year, they're set based on the last setting of census. So.
For 10 years.
10 years, until the next census, around then, as we said. Numerator would change as we add units. But as I've got it planned, if you look, you do that deeper dive into the composition of our affordable housing inventory, you look at year to year, where the changes occur. It's typically in those chapter-backed mortgages and tenant-based references. The government-assisted units, deed-restricted units typically are pre-stated. I mean, there are examples where deed-restricted units come off of restriction and, but they don't move a lot. But chapter-backed mortgages changes a lot in a period of time. And that can impact, you know, at 2.57 years, and now 2.54. That's more likely the explanation for it, as opposed to some other change with regard to restricted. So that's, that's one of the ones that I wanted to reference.
I just wanted to make a comment about ADUs as well. I mean, for the ADUs that we have, this is primarily a way for people to house members of their family. So, you know, as we talk about kind of multi-pronged affordable housing approaches, this is one approach, but it's not going to solve everything, even if we're able to kind of negotiate getting that count towards one or the other of our buckets that we have to meet. Because, you know, that would assume that these folks who are really trying to house members of their family as their first goal, that they then want to move into renting these. And what we have found, as we've monitored these over the years, is a lot of these are empty because these folks don't want to be landlords. So they create them to meet a specific family need, which is important because, you know, it meets an affordability where either an older portion of their family or a younger portion of their family, or a sibling, or a cousin, or whoever, they want to be able to house them in a way that's affordable to both parties within this extended family. But these aren't folks who their first thought is, what, and this? So I think we have to just kind of be careful about what an ADU is and what it can do for us.
I guess what I'm saying is now in 2021, legislative change, ADU will be affordable down there.
Right.
That was clear, huh?
Numerator, right?
Page 31, you have an accessory apartment, you have a separate home.
Not presently in our regulations.
Sorry. Can you understand? A trailer, can it move? The accessory. Only if it's fixed to a foundation. If it's designed to be, it can't. I mean, right now, you only permit a detached ADU, as you know, in two acres. So it can't be a vehicle that's designed, manufactured home that's on a foundation. Yes, we haven't seen any. Folks, I think, since we've adopted that provision, I think maybe we've had, you know, four or five folks that have gone detached, but largely existing structures or, you know, farm, carriage house.
Did you read the manufactured home in your summer? I can't talk. I'm sure.
Maybe the classroom deserves that.
Yeah, I'm in the classroom.
Okay.
But I'm asleep. So I have regulations for something else.
Your question is, can it be a, what do you mean by a trailer?
Or a whisper, a parker.
If it's on a foundation, yes.
Yes, it could.
It could.
Out of curiosity, are RVs or, you know, campers allowed dwelling units?
You're not allowed to use a, you can store an RV on your property. It will treat that as an accessory structure. It has to be setback, like an accessory structure, but you're not permitted to use it as a dwelling. So while it's on your property, people living in it, same with a boat. You can't live on a boat while it's.
Take off the weight. Put it off to a foundation.
So theoretically, yes, on the, what's now considered, you know, manufactured home, we haven't seen anybody available, so. But just like, hey, we can't prohibit someone from putting a manufactured home on a single, and use it as a single-family residence as a primary dwelling either. But we haven't seen, you know, the cost. I think that's the fact of the value of a lot. If you're paying $300,000, $400,000 plus for a parcel of land to build a house on, you're likely not, it's unlikely not going to be your first choice.
I have a question about the process of the affordable housing plans. This has to be approved by June. This is our last joint meeting. Do you need to hear from us on what we prefer on some of these metrics that you're putting there? Like, for instance, I'm thinking of the set-asides. Is there, I think I saw 15% on there. Is that what you're angling towards, or could we go higher?
I think we're going to be changing between 20%. Definitely depending on what zoning district we might be within. But I don't know if we have to do that with this place.
This is more of a conceptual.
Let me answer that just one. I think in Steve and Glenn and the rest of your committee, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the committee is asking for feedback on is whether or not you support the general regulations that are put forth in this plan. We don't need not today decide what that percentage will be. But is there an appetite for us to consider modifying that regulation? Is that a number higher than it is present? And similarly, is there an appetite to consider, maybe, is it okay to include in their recommendations, their plan, for us to consider tweaking our design residence district regulation to perhaps allowing you to maybe move up? So again, we're not, we need not decide on what these requirements are tonight. Those are only the subject of future hearings and discussions, whether or not you generally support the recommendations.
And to clarify.
Correct, all, whatever may be in here, but all, not to decide today what that number would be. But is, do you really have opposition to even including it in the plan? Or is it okay to consider putting it in the plan for future implementation consideration?
Have you ever met with the committee on this plan, the state, like if you don't follow our governance, what happens?
Well, we have to, for this updated plan every five years. It has to meet certain criteria that Glenn went through in terms of, you know, how we might increase it. It's, again, I don't recall the exact language, but we do have to provide. Some are, I know the Housing Committee group is looking at some of the plans already that have been filed. But I don't know if you had anything more.
I think Public Act.
Yeah.
Yeah. So as part of Public Act 2129, which was mentioned as being the recent significant legislation in the last session, I think it was Section 13 of the Act, created a Committee on Connecticut's Development and Future. One of the things that's in their charge is to evaluate the plans. And I forget exactly what the language is, but it sort of hinted to me that there may be additional standards that might come in the future. So people, every town that I have been working with is taking this very seriously and looking at how we can address this issue. So I'm not aware of any town that's taking it frivolously. But if they were to determine that some communities were, they might provide standards in the future. So I think we should all sort of anticipate the fact that the legislature is probably going to evaluate this over time. And there's no penalty if we missed the June 1 deadline.
I think our goal is, you know, the 2014 plan articulated that, which was, you know, taking control of our future, really coming up with what we consider the strategies that might work for Fairfield, as opposed to having some solution imposed from without. So I think that's true here too. If we don't take the lead figuring out what does work with that, like ours, you know, there's the risk that others will help define that for us. And we prefer to kind of take the lead ourselves and figure out what does or doesn't work and put that forward. So that's kind of what we've always used as our guiding principle, which is, let's come up with strategies that work for Fairfield, and let's try our best to implement those with your help. Was there anything, I'll turn it around differently to Jim pose the question, but was there anything in the strategies that we outlined tonight that gave you odds that we shouldn't consider? I mean.
Back to the slides. You go back to the slides, just to.
Here's Steve right there, where the slide shares.
If you take a look at Steve's one-page.
Oh, there they are.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is, I'm just messing with it.
You are. So you got them all on the document that Steve did. I think these were the ones that we identified as probably having the most impact.
What I'm most curious about is the trust fund. We don't have that much money in there, like.
Well, I don't believe that the last three-year average has been about $460,000 a year we're collecting into that fund.
How can we increase that so we can do something more with it? Like spend $3 million? Can we legally increase fees? I mean, how can?
Well, the.
Other sources of money?
Right now, the regulation says it's a $5 per $1,000 value. So that's on top of the other fees that they pay. So if somebody's building a 5 billion project, they're going to pay $5 per thousand to do trust fund, but they're also paying $5 per thousand plus to building permit costs. And then a similar number to the fire marshal for their permitting process. So it's fairly expensive.
And that's the only source of our money for the trust fund?
Yeah, there's a small amount.
A little bit in the recognition.
A grant might from.
We have a small amount of donation there, a small amount of rented income. As you recall, we purchased some of the properties, we did the Navy housing, Department of Commerce, they had some old tenants, and they're paying rent to continue to live there until they secure up the housing. And that money goes into the housing trust. One of the things that that, or how it's looking at, is are the opportunities for us to diversify the sources of income for the housing trust fund. Whether it's, you know, working with discur donations, donations, or other programs that we might have that could increase the amount of money that we had at our disposal. The other idea was to use the housing trust amount levered with other sources of funding. So, you know, when we looked at Department of Commerce, we did secure approval of or finance hard to them to allocate a bond to the station, but the moral of it, using the housing trust fund as a payment mechanism. We haven't had that, but that does give us the ability to, you know, perhaps go beyond what we actually have in the bank right now.
Should that be one of, part of your guidelines, or is that part of the guidelines for the housing trust fund?
It's kind of our second, secondary. We were kind of focused tonight, definitely wanted to make sure that we got, talked through some of the issues that have an ADU's implication, because the last thing, not that this is the, you know, I don't want to have further conversation, but I want to include something in our plan that is a definite, you know, not a long-sighted.
Thank you.
One of the things that it was brought to our attention, I think at one point a couple of years ago, by an employee in town who has a property on the Cape. And Wellfleet actually does a utility stuff for once a year to solicit contributions to their housing trust fund. I will just plant that idea with the affordable housing and leave it like that.
Ultimately, how many?
In order of magnitude, what, in general, someone's building, they're building a house. They're generally paying at least $2,500 to $3,500 in. So it's adding the cost of that unit. So that's kind of the order of magnitude on a new single-family house, about $2,500 to $3,000 fee per house. The largest by far, universities, since we've adopted this, have done some major projects. So the schools, for example, have paid affordable housing fees of collectively about $1,500 for both of those big projects. So where we weren't getting it correctly, we get highly, but the universities have been buying largest payments or into that fund, some of the dormitory projects, literally sticker card dormitory projects, your arenas, Fairview's arenas, some of the townhouses. So of that, 1.5, and to date, we've collected, I'd say, probably at least half, it's been paid by both of the universities. But just for the general applicant. But just for the general applicant, you know, simple family analysis, 25, like I said, $2,500, $3,500, you bring in addition to your house, you get $5 for $1,000 down on top of what it's going to cost you to, to do that. So I just want to give you the magnitude of that request from him. But again, the. What's that?
Don't just give her any of my.
Mark, is there anybody in the public, you know, on Zoom that has something that they want to add? And while Mark is doing that, so we want your comments. You know, we've got seven strategies and four supporting actions. Your comments would be appreciated, but don't limit yourself just to that. If you have ideas that we've not incorporated, please send them through.
We have, I don't see anything in the chat. When, her, or Kelly, do you have any questions? Like, the chat, you're sort of on mute at this point. Anything else before we finish off?
Thanks very much for having me.
Steve, any closing remarks?
Just thank you.
Yeah.
Tommy, I think, when I, would you like to say anything for pointing something?
I, this is great collaboration. It continues, you passed the 3:30 term deadline for the final, final mission plan and through the adoption, but, you know, certainly beyond that, I think we should continue to do this because you just in a couple of hours, we will be able, you know, by coming, I'd say, come up with it. Stephen's new idea.
I'm just finishing up. I don't know if you have anything else.
All set, thank you.
All right. Well, I appreciate everyone coming. Just nothing further, we'll adjourn the meeting at 8:35. Thank you very much.
Thank you.